Good evening, everyone, and thank you for tuning into tonight's Planning Commission. Can we have a pledge of allegiance? And I'll ask our newest commissioner, Mr. McGee, to please stand and lead us all in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Chair Bobdino.
Here.
Vice Chair Newman.
Present.
Commissioner Kialdo.
Here.
Commissioner Begay.
Here.
And Commissioner Hessler.
Here.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is public communications. Anyone who's joining us on Zoom and would like to talk about the presentation on SB9, we will have a separate public communication after the staff report and presentation. So if there's anyone else who wants to address the commission on any other topic that's not the agenda, now would be the time to do so. So please go ahead and raise your Zoom hand or otherwise let us know. All right, not seeing any virtual hands. We'll close public communication. Any written communications?
None received.
All right. Next consent calendar, there are no items. Next would be continued business, there are no items. New public hearing, there are none. And now brings us to new business. We are having a workshop, which is a receive and file matter on the single-family R1 residential existing conditions, findings and considerations in a report, and a study session regarding the multi-unit options and recommendations to address requirements of Senate Bill SB9. And with that, can we have a staff report, please? Sure. Thank you, Chair. While Eduardo gets the PowerPoint presentation up, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce John Kaliski from John Kaliski Architects, who I've had the pleasure to work with in a few different capacities. And John's also familiar with El Segundo from his previous work, working on the Smoky Hollow specific plan. And so I'm happy to bring him back and welcome back to the team. John spent significant amount of time with his team looking at our R1 neighborhoods, specifically as it relates to the implications of SB9 and how SB9 might impact the R1 neighborhood should anyone exercise the legislative rights that SB9 is giving them through lot subdivisions and duplex development. And so I hand it over to John, who can run us through his presentation. And like I explained earlier, tonight's really about a discussion. It's to gain, provide some background information, but really glean some insight from the Planning Commission as to what you prioritize as your preferences in the R1 neighborhood. And then it'll give us some direction to come back to the commission with a zone text amendment down the road, ideally within the next month or two, so that we can get a text amendment together and updated zoning code shortly after the new year. But anyways, with that, I'll hand it over to John.
Well, thank you and good evening. This is kind of a landmark because it's the first time I've spoken in public in a year and nine months. So I'm not used to doing it with a mask on. So this is a study session, as Michael said, we're glad to be here. My office, I think, is somewhat represented in the audience. Amanda Lee, hopefully Amanda, you're taking notes as we go through this so that we remember what's going on. Why don't we go on to the next slide? Oh, me, that's me. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just before you begin, for those who tuned in, just explain really quickly, what is SB9?
And that's exactly what this presentation is going to do, but in a nutshell, SB9 is legislation that goes into effect in January. It's state legislation, it's not local legislation, and it basically requires cities to approve the splitting of lots should homeowners come forward and provides for the building of a duplex on each of the split lots. And I think, you know, anyone who's been reading the newspaper, has been following this, knows that this is controversial and knows that some cities are concerned to the degree that this will impact the quality of the residential, single-family neighborhoods. And we will go through this in a lot more detail. In fact, I should probably say that we ran through this, an earlier version of this presentation with staff, I guess last week. It takes about 20, 25 minutes to get through. At any time, if you want to stop me and ask a question, because I haven't been clear, that's fine. I understand. So what we're going to do tonight is introduce who we are and what we're doing, what we were asked to do by the city. We're going to show you a little bit of a project timeline, which will take just a moment, which Michael was referring to a moment ago. We're going to describe the existing conditions as we consultants saw them. You know a lot more about your city than we do. Even though we worked on the Smoky Hollow Plan, we hardly consider ourselves experts in the way that planning commissioners would be. And then we're going to take apart a little bit SB9, as well as your existing codes and frameworks that you use in the city, and try to describe what some of the constraints and what some of the considerations and maybe some of the opportunities are. And then in the end, I've got three big order questions that as we worked on this, we wanted to ask the Planning Commission, because as Michael said, we need to get direction from you and from the city in terms of how they would like us potentially to craft any recommendations so that they're appropriate to this circumstance and this place in this city. Okay, so in terms of introductions, we're architects and urban designers. As Michael said, I've worked on projects with him in the past. Specifically, Michael and I worked on R1 issues or single-family residential issues throughout the city of Culver City over a course of about three years that led to a variety of measures to try, in essence, control mansionization and to shape the placement of accessory dwelling units in the city. We've done that type of work in probably five or six cities at this point. I think one of the things that we bring to these types of efforts is that we're also practicing architects who build ADUs and sometimes build single-family housing, though most of our work is multifamily housing at this point. But we think that perspective helps us a little bit because it lets us see these issues through the lens of people who are trying to do things as opposed to simply trying to organize how you instruct what people do. We had a kickoff meeting, well, we were first approached about this, I think, in early October. It was very, very fast-paced. We were asked if we were interested in it. We had a kickoff meeting with Eduardo here and Michael here in, I think, early part of November. We have a pretty accelerated schedule. We've been concentrating on just getting to know El Segundo R1 neighborhoods a little bit better and documenting existing conditions and taking a look at the existing policy frameworks. In December, where we are right now, we're bringing back that first flush of findings to you as the Planning Commission to get some input. We're then scoped to develop some specific recommendations, which might be in the form of either some tweaks or changes to your zoning code, or they could be design guidelines depending upon how you direct us. And those would be coming back potentially, not necessarily in stone, to the Planning Commission in mid-January. And the goal was to get this before the City Council, before the end of January, so that the city could start operating on its terms as opposed to the state legislated terms as early as possible after the, not the ordinance, the state legislation goes into effect. So in terms of, let me start off in terms of a little bit of a discussion of existing conditions, findings, and some of the considerations that we developed. And I must say and emphasize that those considerations are our considerations as consultants, not necessarily, you know, Michael or Eduardo's. We weren't instructed what to say to you, we just came forward and said, here are some ideas. The challenge that was given to us was how can the built form character of El Segundo's single-family neighborhoods be honored while implementing the requirements of recent state housing legislation? And the challenge is a real challenge because the city really doesn't, the way the legislation, as I'm sure you realize, was written, doesn't give you much of a choice, at least on the surface. You have to basically deal with applicants who come in and want to do this type of work. But there is room for the city to be affirmative about some things and constraining about other things, which we'll talk about. What we've done so far is we have driven or walked every single R1 street within your city. The great thing about El Segundo is it's possible to do that in a day. We've taken a look at your general plan, your zoning code, we've looked at SB9. We're still learning about SB9. As late as last week, Ami, who I work with, and Amanda, who I work with, were attending a seminar given by the state as to how SB9 should be interpreted. And we learned some things last week that we actually didn't even present to Michael and Eduardo. We also looked at it in relationship to SB330, which is a law passed, I think, two years before, which basically tells cities that they have to ministerially approve certain types of projects within timeframes. And we tried to understand it in the relationship to that law. We have pulled together some general findings and considerations for this discussion, and we've generally done it within the context of a kind of larger order that we see in El Segundo, that you basically have 25-foot lots and you have 50-foot lots. Our objective is to familiarize staff and decision-makers with the state legislative parameters. We're going to try to develop alternatives for design standards and/or guidelines for multi-unit residential construction within R1 zones that build upon existing built-form patterns and community character. And then we're going to basically, from those approaches, potentially, some of which we might learn about tonight, provide recommendations for amended and/or additional zoning standards and guidelines. So what you can see is, tonight, we're trying to have a conversation about one and two. We're not yet at the point where we have solid recommendations. We're really looking for more input and discussion before we sort of go back and develop hard language. Okay, so our neighborhood tour. We went out and we traveled the city. We started off by basically, just simply, which you all, I'm sure, know, identified where the R1 neighborhoods are. They're generally to the northwest corner of the city, if you think of the city as having four quadrants, and they're clustered more or less around the downtown and off of the main boulevard here, north-south, that runs by City Hall. The block structure is pretty consistent throughout the city. You have 320-foot by 800-foot blocks, and on the other end, you have some smaller blocks that are about 320 feet by 500 feet. Some of your blocks have alleys in them, which we thought was very, very interesting because that obviously changes how access can occur to those lots as opposed to blocks that don't have alleys. Blocks are basically the smallest rectangular group of several buildings in a city. They're surrounded by streets, and they don't really have any type of thoroughfare running through them. They're consistent, except for those alleys, which right now are service alleys. There are obviously variations to that that you see, but since we're looking at this from sort of, say, 2,000 to 5,000-foot level as opposed to a lot-by-lot level, we have to somehow try to generalize. And so we started with the block structure. Once you get into the block structure, what you start to discover is that there are really two types of single-family conditions that are memorialized as well in your zoning code. There are your 25-foot wide lots and your 50-foot lots. And those 25-foot lots, while there is variation, a lot of the time you see this 140 feet of depth that basically defines those, which means that your 25-foot lots are around 3,500 square feet in size, and your 50-foot lots, in the most generic sense, are at around 7,000 square feet in size. And those numbers become important to us because the city already is constraining the size of the amount of construction that can occur on those lots by either a floor-area ratio or a lot-coverage requirement. And those are things that we'll talk about some more as well. We also, and this is always difficult because the truth is, is that we live in an eclectic time. We live, this is an eclectic city, and Los Angeles County as a whole was developed with a tremendous amount of variety in terms of the single-family residential conditions. But one of the things we tried to do was, in a general way, we tried to identify what we considered to be built-form, single-family patterns. Like when you walk up and down the streets, what do you notice? What characterizes a single-family residential street as opposed, you know, at a finer grain? So for instance, a lot of the neighborhoods are single-story, though they're obviously places where you see predominance of two-story or a mixture of one and two. But there clearly still is a single-family or single-story, single-family home type that if not, the majority is certainly a very significant portion. Those homes, though, are not simply boxes. There are a variety of different types of roofs. There are elements which break down the scale. A lot of the time, we see things like entry elements on those houses. These are all things that we can identify and ultimately say, does a house have an entry element? Yes or no? Does a house have a breakdown of mass? Yes or no? And it's important to remember that what we're trying to do, and we'll talk about this more, is to find the things that staff can say yes or no to. Because SB9 requires that any type of standard or any type of guideline that you ultimately adopt, that it be measurable and quantifiable, meaning it has to be, it is or it isn't. And so that was one of the things we started to do, was take a look at the houses and try to figure out for ourselves, what are the is and isn't elements that exist in the city? So for instance, on two-story houses, we see houses with both flat roofs and pitched roofs, but we also see a lot of houses that have major and minor massing elements in them regardless of whether they're one-story or two-story. These are two examples, obviously, but in both cases, you have two-story houses, and it isn't just one form. It's made up of a major form and a minor form. And that was something that struck us as somehow being important if we were going to try to define the type of character that people needed to be striving towards if they were doing new construction. We also, insufficient data for an image, that's a really interesting message. How do you hit okay? That isn't the way to do it. Let's go back one. And that's really interesting. Okay. I wonder if this is going to create, it's just this one image, so I won't worry about it too much, but what I can say about this is that this was a slide that's supposed to talk about orientation. In some ways, this is very, very banal, but in other ways, it's absolutely critical, which is that houses tend to be oriented towards the sidewalk, and they tend to be oriented towards the street. And the front entries of houses tend to basically have some type of expression or component that is identifiable, and there's a relationship between the front door and the sidewalk. I mean, this would be true in a lot of communities, but it's absolutely true within this community. I mentioned a moment ago that we started to identifying major and minor massing, even on some examples where we see very, very simple architecture, where there's been a element added on to over the years. I don't think this was done consciously on the right as major and minor massing. These people just needed to expand their home, but they didn't build out, maybe because of the way the zoning codes were written or the resources that they had available, a full two-story box. On the other hand, you can see on the left, a house that seems more purposely designed in terms of major enassing, it does it by basically having the second story not be as large as the first story. So that, your code already has some parameters in it which require that second stories not be exactly the same sizes as first stories, but when you start driving around the city, you can see your zoning code in action actually beginning to create patterns. I didn't mention that you have, obviously, front and side yards. We'll talk more about that as well. There's a consistent 22-foot plus or minus front yard that you see throughout much of the city. In the rear yards, it's a little bit different, but along the alleys, your encroachment towards the alley gets as small as five feet. And so that's a very different condition along the alleys. There are different types of roof forms, sometimes gabled roofs. There are elements within the roofs that break down the scale, whether it be dormers or cross gables. Here, we were also pointing out that you tend to see different types of colors, often two colors on a house as opposed to just one color. There are a variety of materials. Here, we have entry expressions, sometimes very, very simple, just a simple recess, other times a full porch, sometimes a stoop. I mean, all of the, some houses have bay windows on them. The house on the left is a very particular type that you see throughout Southern California. It's called minimal traditional. It was built in the 1930s. Those houses were built either at the late end of the Depression or right after the war, World War II. They were built for working people, and right from the get-go, they were very simple. But there was still an attempt, even within the modest means that people had available at that time, to create a little bit of expression, to create a little bit of architectural interest. A lot of the time, you see two materials deployed on houses. The right is an arts and crafts example, where there's some type of rock on the bottom. The left is basically a more workforce type, where you see basically higher-quality material deployed on the front of the house to create a sense of quality, if you will, as you approach the entry. Garages come as both detached garages, where you see the garage from the street in the rear lot as an independent building. These examples are just simply showing fairly simple, like we had hundreds of pictures to choose from by the time we were done, but what I like about the one on the left is that it's an extremely simple house with an entry element, a front yard, landscaping, garage in the back, it's a separate structure. The one on the right has clearly had an addition built to it at a certain time. The addition doesn't really impact too much the street because it's built behind, or a little bit behind the ridge line, and then they matched the sloped roof to it to get it to work. Sometimes you have attached garages. On the right is a case, actually, in both cases, I think we have examples of facing alley. These are 25-foot wide lots. I believe, if my memory serves me right, all of your 25-foot lots, oh, no, this is the way to say it, whenever you have an alley, you only have 25-foot lots. I don't think that you have 50-foot lots on alleys.
I think we did.
Is there a case?
Why didn't, why didn't you put a lot?
Okay, we'll take a look at that. But again, the patterns are repeating. Okay. So then we tried to summarize this. So we said, okay, this in combination with your zoning code, you have typical built-form at 25-foot lots. You either have one or two stories. Your zoning code basically says you have a maximum of 40% lot coverage, but the history of that, I suspect people did things up until that got passed, because we do see examples where it looks like it's more than 40%. But I'm assuming those people are grandfathered in some form or manner. There's no FAR requirement, since yourselves, as well as other people who are listening, that just basically means that, FAR stands for floor-area ratio, which is a function of the size of the lot. And so let's say you own a lot that's 1,000 square feet, and you have a .6 FAR, that would mean you would be able to build 600 square feet on the lot. In fact, you do have a .6 FAR, and that applies to the 50-foot lots, not to the 25-foot lots. On the smaller lots, you have a lot-coverage requirement. You have opportunities, because so many of these lots, 25-foot lots are on the alleys, for the garages to be oriented towards the alley. And we'll talk a little bit more about some of the numbers in this in a moment. On your 50-foot lots, instead of having a lot-coverage requirement, you have an FAR requirement, which we just discussed. I can't do these numbers in my head, but if you think of that number, 7,000, it would be 700 times point, or it would be 700 times six, right? So that would be 4,300 square feet, I believe, would be the largest house you would be allowed to build on a typical 50-by-140 lot. You have both alley-facing as well as no alley conditions. The thing that's important about the conditions that don't have an alley is that you have fairly small rear yard requirements in El Segundo. So if one was to imagine a two-story house being right up, built right up to your rear yard setback line, it would not be unusual to have people perhaps come forward to the city and say they felt that their privacy in the adjoining property was somehow being compromised. That's something that would probably happen today as well, even without all of this SB9 On the right-hand side, you can see the thing that I mentioned a little bit earlier, is that you have a constraint of .6 FAR, but the second story can only be .25 FAR. So if you think about it, what that means is you can't build a pure box where the second floor is exactly the same size as the first floor. So the city is already required that they're, requiring that there be some type of massing modulation if you build a two-story structure. So that is a pattern that one would hope characterizes more and more of the architecture through time. Okay, we reviewed, and that is the most ridiculous thing. Okay, my phone is now officially, well, I tried to turn it off, but I have my brand-new phone in the car right now, which, because this phone is dead, which is part of the reason that I'm getting it. Okay, we reviewed four policies, the general plan, the zoning code, SB9, and SB330. And I'll go through these, try to do it quickly. Okay, the El Segundo general plan, you're probably very familiar with this. It has land-use objectives for single-family neighborhoods. It was written in 1992. It's being potentially updated. I mean, one of the goals of the city is to preserve and maintain the city's low-medium-density residential nature. There's a desire to see housing codes enforced, which would mean zoning. There's a desire to preserve, protect, and extend, if possible, single-family residential uses, which is obviously challenged by this legislation. And then, you know, there's one other thing that we found, which we thought was interesting. Single-family units shall receive priority consideration and implementation of any rehabilitation programs implemented by the city. This is obviously a general plan goal. I don't know to what extent you've done that, but the reason we highlighted this was just because we haven't seen this type of language in other general plans, and it just emphasizes, again, the importance of the single-family neighborhoods in terms of, let's just say, the civic culture of El Segundo. Right now, just under 50% of El Segundo's 7,463 residential units are single-family, the rest being multifamily. And this comes out of your draft housing element, which you're looking at on a different track, obviously, but we took a look at it. Interestingly, 88.8%, or almost 90% of El Segundo's housing stock is over 30 years old and may be subject to updating and/or change. I mean, we're not saying that people want to change their houses, but it is interesting to think that you have an older housing stock in the city. And as people sell houses, as there's naturally occurring turnover, people will look at the existing housing and think about updating it. And they will potentially look over the coming 10 years or so at making improvements. And they'll make those improvements within the context of the type of legislation that's being passed. Up, here's another slide where we have a failure of imagination, and I might have to actually, eventually, if this happens in some of the latter slides, turn on my own computer and look at the things, so I'm sure that I'm doing this right. So you have a 2020 draft housing element that you're considering. It does encourage you to rehabilitate deteriorating dwelling units, though we didn't see too many in the city, provide new affordable housing opportunities. The interesting thing is SB9 was passed with the intention of somehow promulgating more affordable housing opportunities. To provide opportunities for new housing construction in a variety of locations, again, the state law is kind of giving you a mechanism to do that for better and for worse, perhaps. And then to remove governmental constraints on housing development by allowing second units. Obviously, there already was ADU legislation passed that allowed second units by the state, and now we have this SB9. So your housing element seems to be trying to gear the city towards being positively responsive, and at the same time, you've got this built-form character which needs to be addressed. If you take a look at your zoning code as, in terms of the 25-foot lots, the thing that you realize very, very quickly is that the light, transparent purple is where you can place a house within it. place a house within it. The amount of house that you can build within that purple, we max these out. So that's your 40%, or, excuse me, yes, that is your 40% lot coverage, and basically, you have a 22-foot, well, there are some performance standards, but let's just generally say there's a 22-foot front yard, three-foot side yards, and five-foot rear yards. There's a little bit of performance nature to it, where the side yards can vary a bit, but in general, that is the envelope, if you will, in which a building can be built, regardless of whether it's one story or two stories, because you also have a height limit of either 26 feet or 30 feet, 32 feet, depending upon whether you have a pitched roof or a flat roof condition. If I do the same thing in the 50-foot example, the same thing occurs, which is that you have a minimum five-foot rear yard requirement, a minimum 22-foot front yard requirement. You have a performance standard for the side yards, but they're never going to end up being less than, I think, five feet? Is that correct? Three feet, I'm sorry. They won't both be three feet, but it won't be less than three feet. And your height, again, is 32 and 26. So going back to those examples where we drew the typical house, and, and again, on the single-family, you go up to .6 FAR, so 4,000 whatever it is, square feet. If you put that in there under your typical house, what you can see is there's volumetric area which still exists, where at least theoretically, if you were to relax your zoning standards, people could build things without necessarily interrupting the pattern along the front of the yards, meaning as it faces the streets, but clearly, it would start to increase the mass, and clearly, it would start to creep towards the rear yard, and some of the goals and some of the patterns that you've tried to develop over the year would be challenged if, if you didn't do anything. Okay, SB9. As we mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, SB9 promotes residential housing density by allowing and expediting the process for an urban lot split on a parcel in a single-family zone, one lot split. With that lot split, you can build two residential units per lot within an R1 zone, as long as the development satisfies legislative requirements, which means if the city doesn't do anything, basically, those legislative requirements are placed into the state legislation. We'll talk, go through them. And this is what we learned last week, which we weren't 100% sure, sure of. You can basically take a single-family lot and build a maximum of four units on it. You cannot, you know, add ADUs on top of that. You basically has a, has a, have a choice as a person who controls that property. You can split it and build two on each lot, or you could split it and potentially build one on each lot with an accessory dwelling unit, or you could build, split it and build one on each lot, maybe with an accessory dwelling unit and a JADU. I'm not 100% sure that you can do that, because that would be three units per lot. So this, it, it, this is, it seems, and, and we've talked with Eduardo and Michael about needing to sort of walk through all of this with your city attorney to make sure that we're exactly right, but it seems that we're really talking about a maximum of four units. So in essence, duplex residential developments, meaning two per lot, are permitted without any type of discretionary reviews or hearings. Now, in order to utilize SB9, the parcel has to be within a single-family zone, so this has nothing to do with multifamily-zoned property in your city. It's only the R1 property, and it has to be within a city which you are. In order to utilize SB9, a parcel cannot be established through a prior exercise of an urban lot split, so if for some reason, somebody right now had a, a big, say, R1 lot that they split, it's no longer subject to being split again. It has to be owned, it can be owned by any person, or, excuse me, it cannot be owned by a person or a person working with a person who has previously subdivided the adjacent parcel. So like, if you think about, this was obviously put in there because there's a lot of fear about corporations coming in and buying up lots of houses, and this was a protection to basically say, listen, a single-family homeowner can do that, but a single-family owner can't then buy the property next to theirs and do that, or they can't have their grandfather buy it and have their grandfather do it, or their development associate or something like that. Now, how you enforce that is a very interesting thing. I'm, that's beyond my pay scale. The one that's in a box is one that we're still struggling, quite frankly, to understand, because it's, it's another protection that's been put in there to try to limit sort of the overdevelopment of these properties. So it allows the demolition, or it cannot, you cannot allow the demolition of more than 25% of the exterior structural walls unless a local ordinance allows it, or the site has not been occupied by a tenant in the last three years. And, and we haven't figured out how to describe this one yet well, but we think that what this one is about is basically saying that if somebody has been leasing their house to somebody, that the homeowner, that this, that basically, the homeowner just can't kick them out and demolish more than 25% of the walls, that they have to give them a certain period of time so that they can, you know, find other housing, or something like that. But I, I put this one in a box because we think it's powerful, but we don't understand it yet, and we haven't been able to get anybody to advise us.
Do you think that's, I'm sorry, do you think that's related to just owners that have tenants?
Well, there are other protections for owners with tenants as well, and we think that that is what it is. It's, it's a, it's a type of protection device. I just apologize for not being able to describe it better, and we're still working on that.
Well, because I was reading the, the, the language from SB9, and I, too, came across that line, that you cannot, it doesn't allow for the demolition of more than 25% of, of the existing exterior structural walls, which almost sounds like if it's new construction, it doesn't apply.
And I don't think that's what the intent of SB9 is. I think what they're doing is they're putting a tenant-protection element in there to keep people from doing construction around an existing tenant. But I, I need to sort of further investigate that. Most of this doesn't really apply in our R1 neighborhoods in El Segundo, so for instance, a parcel can't be located in a coastal zone. Your coastal zone is basically starts at your cliffs, if my memory serves me right, can't be on prime farmland, unless you want to declare all of your single-family residential agricultural again, it's not going to apply. We couldn't find any wetlands in your R1 areas. None of them seem to be very high-fire hazard zones. We don't know about hazardous waste sites. We checked for earthquake fault zones. We didn't see any, we looked for special flood hazard zones. We didn't see any no-flood ways. You haven't identified any of this land, from what we know as a conservation, as part of a conservation plan, though it is interesting, you do have some interesting butterflies. And we talked with Michael and Eduardo about that last week, and we're not sure 100% what that means right now. And again, even if we said, okay, the city is a habitat for the El Segundo blue butterfly, how does that really relate unless you've somehow already protected habitat for it? So I don't think there's much there, but we should at least probably play it out and see what happens. You don't have anything under conservation easements, and none of these areas are historic districts at this point. So, like, for instance, I live in a historic neighborhood. My neighbors were going completely crazy, and I kept telling them, it doesn't apply to us because we have a protected neighborhood in the city of Los Angeles, and they didn't believe me, but then when the legislation came out, that was placed in there, and that was one of the things that they did through the various iterations of this law. The other thing is, and this gets back to the point that Commissioner Hoxler was talking about, existing parcels cannot have any of the following protective measures. They can't have a recorded covenant that restricts rent to people of moderate, low, or very low income. They can't be rent-controlled housing, which is a really interesting thing. And they can't have been withdrawn from the market under the Ellis Act, and if a tenant has occupied the house within the last three years, they're not subject to the law. So again, I, I think all of these were put in as protections, and I think the real challenge with these is, is the ability of the city to develop procedures when people come in with permits to try to understand how that is done. It happens all the time with multifamily housing, but it traditionally mostly hasn't happened too much with single-family housing. Okay, design constraints. We talked about the, that we have to have objective design, design standards that can't interfere with the construction of two units per lot, each being at least 800 square feet in floor area. That is interesting because you could, as a city, decide that you'll allow SB9, but that you'll never permit anything bigger than 800 square feet per unit per lot. Now, in your area that has no FAR constraint, that's not going to make any difference, where you have a .6 FAR, and we talked about 4,300, did I do that number right? .6 times, uh?
Forty-two hundred.
Forty-two hundred. Eight hundred times four is 3,200 square feet on a 50-foot-wide lot, and then I think there becomes, and this is where we need direction, a question of fairness to a certain degree. Do you limit somebody on a 50-foot lot to building less than what they're allowed to do right now as a single-family, you know, home on, on the same lot? And how does that really play out? No setbacks are required for existing structures, or structures constructed in the same location or the same dimensions as an existing structure. This they picked up from the accessory dwelling unit laws that the state passed, which have exactly the same type of provisions in them. You can implement a setback of up to four feet from the side and rear lot lines for new construction, which implies that they are anticipating new construction. So as we're going through this, we're sort of saying, well, what are the triggers that the city has to play with? You could play a little bit with side yards. You can, I mean, right now, you've got three-foot minimum side yards. You could talk about four-foot minimum side yards. You could look at minimums or, or maximums of the size of the dwelling units that were built as well. You may require off-street parking of up to one space per unit, but you can't do that if you're loca, if you have a car-share vehicle stationed within a block of a parcel. Right now, we're not aware of any car, official car-share curbside management program that you're doing in the city. And if a parcel is located within a half-mile walking distance of either a high-quality transit corridor or a major transit stop, you can't require that as well. But as far as we know from looking at it, there are no high-quality transit corridors, and none of the single-family residentially-zoned property is within a half-mile of a major transit stop, as it's defined by the state.
So a bus stop is not?
We don't think so. I, I, um...
You're talking like a metro green line?
Or say where two rapid bus lines come together with a frequency of service at like 15 minutes or less during rush hours.
Is that different than the language for the ADUs? Or is it, are they using the same terms?
That's a good question.
I think it's consistent.
I think it's different.
Because, oh, you think it's different?
I think when we studied that before, it was, they simply said any bus stop.
Before, we were told any bus stop, and they were like, you've got bus stops all over town.
Well, I think, my understanding of the ADUs is that it is any bus stop, and we can go back, and hopefully Amanda's taking notes, but we'll all, between us, remember this, and just check whether that major transit stop definition is the one which is basically either a rail station or a bus line that has a certain type of frequency or, or crossing of two.
Okay.
Okay? So you can, we think, require one space per unit outside of high-quality transit corridors and more than half a mile from a major transit stop. That certainly presents a constraint in some ways on your smaller lots. On the bigger lots, it's pretty easy to still get four cars on a lot. The subdivided parcels need to be of approximately equal area, and this is in the state legislation, with one parcel no smaller than 40% of the lot area of the original parcel designated for subdivision. So what we're noting here, and then, okay, newly-created parcels must be 1,200 square feet minimum, unless indicated otherwise. So if you think about 3,500 square feet, that's basically 1,750 square feet. We just showed it being split horizontally as opposed to vertically. I can show you 12-foot-wide townhomes in Philadelphia. You know, that's where our Betsy Ross lived, and people liked that, but I'm not, we're not sure that that's really what you want to do in this city, but if you said to us, is it possible to build a 12-foot-wide house, I'd tell you, yes, it is. In fact, we're designing a lot of houses right now, or, that are based on 13 feet, six inches. On the other hand, on your 50-foot, it becomes a lot easier to imagine both, in this diagram, both vertical as well as horizontal splits, and, and thinking about what the implications for those are. One possibility is that you, like, you know, that 40% of the lot area, you could, by a numbers game, trend it towards a 50/50 split or some other type of split. You're not completely constrained right there. Working out the implications of that is something that we'd need to think about how to do well, and we'll talk about that. Okay, so that's kind of a overarching summary of SB9 with a couple of questions. SB330 is not really that critical, but I think it gets into the thing that we've been talking about, is that it prohibits imposing or enforcing non-objective design standards. And in terms of what we were asked to do, that's our biggest challenge. We can't have anything that says, a design guideline that says, you shall design your houses to be compatible with the houses on the same block face of the street, without defining what compatible means. I mean, when I first started writing design guidelines, that's the way they were written, and, you know, we've all been through that. It's very, very difficult. I'm sure you've had to sit on this panel and try to figure out what compatible, or ensure harmony, or, you know, you can't do any, it has to be yes, no, is, isn't, an actual number, something like that. And that's where those built-form patterns become very interesting, because you could say that everything has to have a pitched roof on it. You could say that everything has to have an entry element in it, and then you could give people a menu, and an entry element is defined as A, B, C, D, E, F, G. So there are some opportunities to basically shape this, but it has to be measurable and quantifiable. And then in terms of the review times, that's basically something that the city is already dealing with in terms of how they intake projects and how they process projects. So right now, it's really a multifamily thing. In the future, it's going to be a single-family lot-split thing as well. So the left column is simply describing some of the areas where you might look at things, like height, density, FAR, newer increased open space or lot-size requirements, newer increased setback requirements, minimum frontage requirements in terms of setback or maximum lot coverage limitations. Those are all things that are tools that you could play with if you wanted to, or you could direct us to come back to you with things that play with those things based on some larger idea. So in order to utilize SB330, they, the lot has to be residential-only. They are. It has to create two or more units on a project site. It is. So I think the big thing is that when the city starts implementing SB9, they have to do it within the SB330 context. Okay, so how does SB9 interplay with SB30? With lot splits and the potential for increased housing due to SB9, SB330 ensures that in instances where two-plus residential units are created, the intensity of housing is not lessened, objective design standards are utilized, and the duration of review periods meets state requirements. So that's the sort of framework that we have to work within. So now, the last part of this presentation are some of our findings and considerations. We came up, I think, with 10. 10 is a, maybe 10 is a silly number, but we got exhausted, I think, after that. So, number one, residents utilizing SB9 may contribute to the draft housing elements, housing goals by designing and developing additional units through lot splits in single-family neighborhoods. So, single-family residential, and what we're saying is, that's a finding, that this can happen now. So we're saying, as a consideration, single-family residential development patterns may be impacted if additions at lot splits do not maintain existing neighborhood character. So that's what we're, I mean, this is just a quid and a quo pro. Two, existing R1 zoning envelopes in the city of El Segundo regarding height, front yards, and side yards may be adequate to accommodate additional housing units. So we have worked in cities where they've drawn the zoning envelope so tightly that there's no way you can implement anything within an existing zoning envelope or a gross zoning envelope. We don't think that's the case in El Segundo. We think you have room to, in essence, accommodate some of this within your existing zoning envelope with, at least from a design sense only, a minimum of impact on the street character. So lots should be split, this is our consideration, such that existing frontage character is maintained, and additional bulk and mass occurs at the rear of a lot. I mean, there are some considerations. I mean, there are some considerations there too, but that's the sort of a gross finding or consideration. Some R-one, number three, zoning standards may not provide for SB nine implementation, and we began to touch on that. So, you may need to consider reviewing and adjusting existing zoning in terms of FAR and lot coverage to maintain single-family character, in particular, at street frontages. So what I think I'm a little bit worried about, particularly on those smaller lots, is that you may need to sort of think a little bit about the lot coverage. Otherwise, people are going to come in and saying, you're keeping them from building an SB nine lot split. Like, that forty percent lot coverage just isn't going to be enough. Now, how you change that or how much you change it, we don't know, and we don't even know if that's a direction you want to give us. Same thing for FAR. I discussed that a little bit earlier. It's like you can manipulate the FAR a little bit in terms of maximum unit size. Do you want to do that, I think, is a question? What's the pluses and minuses of doing that? Number four, El Segundo R-one neighborhoods incorporate eclectic architecture and built-form patterns but are characterized by typically uniform front yard setbacks in one- and two-story heights. So maintaining R-one front yards and street character and maybe two-story maximum height is key to conserving single-family neighborhood character. I think that, I always think about it, as an urban designer at least, as what does the public perceive when they walk up and down their neighborhood streets? In terms of mass, bulk, orientation, setback, landscape, et cetera? Like, you may have seen the article a week or so ago in the LA, two weeks ago in the LA Times, where I think one of the cities that's struggling with the same thing, what to do, is your city, said, well, maybe we should require that every front yard have a tree in, put in it as part of any construction project in the zoning code. And we've done that in other cities, but they were seeing this as a response to SB nine, as a way of enhancing front yard street character and, to a certain degree, shielding any additional bulk and mass and things like that. Do you want to go to the next slide? Yes, I do. Okay? Prevailing R-one built form incorporates visible front-facing major and minor massing elements, including split high and low roof forms, and utilization of smaller components such as entry features or bays placed in front of larger masses. So you may want to provide some major and minor massing standards to maintain or to extend some of the built-form patterns that we observed when we moved around the city. Number six, no R-one lots in El Segundo are within a half-mile radius of a high-quality transit station. We think that's true. So you may want to require one parking space per unit on split lots, though recognize, and we'll show you this in a moment, that that's a challenge, maybe on the smaller lots. Number seven, the majority of lots in El Segundo are either twenty-five foot or fifty-foot wide. So any changes to R-one zoning should acknowledge, we think, differences between narrow versus larger lots. We think that in terms of the way this city has evolved, that was a smart thing for the city to do in the past, and whatever we do right now, we think, we have to think about it in that same context, and it makes sense. Lot coverage requirements for parcels less than twenty-five feet constrain maximum utilization of these parcels for required SB nine allowances. I think what we're mainly saying is, is if you force everything into that forty percent lot coverage, you may be pushing mass and things of that and put pressure on the twenty-two foot setbacks. We think it's better to sort of, if you're going to relax anything, think about doing it towards the rear of lots and towards the alleys, because you have a lot of alleys for those twenty-five foot lots. You want to, yes, sorry. And then finally, we have three more. Ten percent of all R-one parcels in El Segundo are alley-adjacent, creating opportunities to orient parking and second units to these minor rights-of-way? I mean, alley-facing residential units over, say, a twenty- or thirty-year period could really be transformative of the alleys into something more than just service spaces. This could be an opportunity to think about orientation, eyes looking over the alleys, and, you know, really sort of seeing this as an opportunity to make something happen. All lots less than twenty-five feet, we think, are alley-adjacent. So you could require that residential at the rear of lots be oriented towards the alleys with their entries or whatever. And finally, trees and hedges are, we see this all over El Segundo, but trees and hedges are typically used as buffers between narrow lots. We could ensure opportunities for landscape buffers at rear as well as side yards to maintain privacy between lots and provide additional landscape and shade at alleys as practicable. We could also basically provide some additional landscape requirements at front yards as well, above and beyond what's in your existing code. So when we put all of that, and now we're sort of summarizing into consideration, what we're basically saying is that, when we went all of this, we thought, yeah, we got to take a look at that required parking. And you can see that we're showing, in this case, one parking space interior, one parking space in the front yard, and two in a tandem condition at, off the alley. You might want to consider playing around with the minimum lot area, which we talked about, the forty percent and sixty percent. And you do that in order to maintain the twenty-two-foot front yard. You might want to consider more landscape and tree requirements at alleys as well, as well as front yards. You might want to consider a maximum unit size on these twenty-five-foot lots of eight hundred square feet, or eight hundred one square feet, I should probably say. And you might want to even consider an FAR allowance as a way of getting there, so you could give people a little bit of flexibility, and maybe some of them would choose to build two units instead of four units. On your twenty-five-foot lots, we basically just put the same things down here, but there's a little bit more flexibility, as you can see, with the parking. And these diagrams are really not changing your zoning envelopes. It's just it's changing the rules that exist within your zoning envelopes, and those rules would have to be quantifiable. So, we were kind of left with three big-order questions that we felt like we either needed to discuss with staff or get input from, if we were going to proceed to the next step and not just do it as an abstract exercise. So first and foremost, are there El Segundo single-family built-form characteristics that we should be particularly sensitive to? We've presented a bunch of them to you, but we're not from here. You might have others that we forgot about or didn't observe. Like, what is important to you in terms of the single-family residential neighborhoods that you'd like to see some type of recommendations address? Two, should we formulate standards that allow maximum plus or minus eight hundred square foot per SB nine ordinance be developed? Or are there cases where larger SB nine residences are appropriate? So I talked about that in the twenty-five-foot versus the fifty-foot. And just generally, what is the planning commissions and the city's general approach that we ought to be sensitive to? And finally, we think you should, but should we continue to maintain standard distinctions between twenty-five-foot and fifty-foot lots? In particular, lot coverage versus FAR, which is what you have right now, or should we introduce other things having to do with either parking, setbacks, landscape, things of that nature? So with that, that's maybe, I talked longer than I wanted to, but it's been an incredible exercise and education for us, and we're, I'm happy to answer any questions and listen to your input so that we can learn what makes sense for a next step.
Well, thank you for that. I know we will have questions for you. But first, I want to give the chance for the public to make comment after hearing your presentation. So, if we can go back to the Zoom screen, please? All right, we just had our receive and file presentation, and now, for those of you joining us on Zoom, we would like to hear from members of the public. Anyone wishing to make public comment on this presentation, please go ahead and signify on Zoom by raising your hand and let us know. Okay, Mr. or Ms. L. Hill? Who's in charge of Zoom? Is that you, Venus? Can we unmute so they can make public comment? All right, please tell us your name, where you live, and what your comments you have for us tonight.
Yes, it's Louis Hill. Louis, and I'm at four-one-seven West Palm here in El Segundo. I had a question as related to the kind of long-term impact as it relates to the width of our streets, being able to handle such additional density. It's bad enough as it is now, but especially on the west side of town where the streets are so narrow. And in my square block, if everybody decided to split by four, I would, the increased traffic would be absolutely, you just couldn't handle it. So I'm just trying to find out if that's been thought about and what's the approach there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. I'll take notes of your comments so we can ask these questions once the public communications section is over, okay?
Great.
All right, anyone else on Zoom wishing to make any public comments? All right, we're not seeing any. Last call? All right, not seeing any more public comments, we'll go ahead and close public communications. And, how about it? I think he raises a very good point. It seems everything you've talked to us about has been design and look and feel, but the most detrimental impact is going to be increased in traffic, less parking on streets. What can be done to address those characteristics of the R-one zone, as Mr. Hill mentioned? I would like someone to, yes.
That's the sixty-four thousand dollar question. I don't have a great answer for that. We have not looked at street widths at this point. We could look at street widths and just sort of document on a block-by-block basis what is there. I think we are very conscious at this point that the twenty-five-foot lots are a little bit of a conundrum in terms of introducing more cars and the impact, say, on curbside parking or curbside management, and how does that really work? I don't have a good answer for you right now. The only thing that I can think of right now is it would be helpful for us to probably dive into the street widths and just sort of see if there are any substandard streets that, as the city would define, what a substandard street is. And on, along those substandard streets, we'd have to go back and look at the legislation again to see whether or not that constitutes potentially a hazard.
There are streets where you cannot drive two cars down because either side is filled with parking, and so it's a constant who's going to be the friendliest neighbor and pull over sooner in this town as you try to wave someone down. It's not just the west side. Sheldon Street on the east side, right by the school. Schools are another concern. We're going to have cars on top of cars and no parking and children trying to walk to and from school. So anything you can do to look at the impacts on our streets, our circulation element, our infrastructure, and let me know. This is things that we're not allowed to talk about, but these are the realities of what we're dealing with, and we're talking about subdividing single-family homes and putting townhomes based on a per-developer, per-lot basis. Okay, let me ask, the exercise we're going through today is to create new code sections which would apply to only R-ones which are being subdivided according to this new law. Is that accurate? Meaning that if we start going into modulation and frontway entries, would these rules apply to someone who has an R-one and wants to redo their house?
Yeah, so that is part of what we're looking to hear from the planning commission tonight. Without having to go back to the slide, it's really those three questions is, what is it about the built-form characteristics of the single-family residential zone you, as a planning commission, would like to preserve, protect, enhance, moving forward? And that could be specific to the subdivided lots? It could be applicable to all R-one moving forward? But that is some of the feedback that we're looking to hear back from the commission.
Okay, so we can give direction to say, this is the set of rules we want to play by if you're going to subdivide an R-one and put two units on it. You follow these different rules when it comes to modulation, sizing, massing, parking, and all those things?
We'd like to hear that feedback tonight, some of that.
Well, I guess my, I think what your question is, is that a legal read of the law, that you can have to subsets of development standards?
Sure, we can develop subset, or development standards based on overlay zones that are specific to some properties depending on, you know, configuration or how those properties are developed. It's that we can't develop standards that are subjective, that don't meet that yes-or-no criteria that John was expressing or explaining earlier, and that is overly prohibitive. So we cannot develop standards that essentially prohibit the development or.
Or decrease intensity.
Yeah, or decrease intensity when somebody is going to exercise their SB nine rights by subdividing or building a duplex.
I think by definition, even though we do have to get a legal reading, which I mentioned, that the way the legislation is written, it gives you opportunities to create some frameworks for when property is divided utilizing this means within the law. And I don't think that you would necessarily have to say this, a single-family house that's either maintained on the lot or built by the lot has to abide by all the same rules. So for instance, it was clearly their intent to provide for a certain size, minimum size of dwelling. I've interpreted that to mean the opposite in some ways of what you said, which is that if you're currently allowing, say, four thousand two hundred square feet as a, as a single-family house, and somebody subdivides it, I've interpreted to mean that you could place a maximum unit size requirement on that. I don't know whether you'd want to or not, but that's clearly within the legislation. I don't know that that means you have to then lower the FAR for the single-family house as well. I don't think that follows.
Right, that's what I want to make clear what we're doing tonight. Are we making new rules for this new law the state has? When someone comes to town, knocks down a craftsman and wants to put four condos there, and if we make these rules, that's great and fine, are we affecting the neighbor next door who wants to knock down their single-family home and build a single-family home? I think we should have two sets of rules, right? We've already gone through our general plan and everything. We've had conversations about modulation and FAR for single-family homes. But I think what we're talking about here is something fundamentally different.
Yeah, and we entered the exercise thinking what you just said.
Okay.
Is the way that we were approaching it. And we can, I think you used the word, get a legal read on that. I think that's the second thing that we need to get, just a confirmation. But I'm assuming right now that whatever we come up with, that it can be written in such a way that it's, it's a shaping provision for a lot split.
So you'd come in with your application, and we would have a form that says, if you want to do this, here are the requirements, objective, yes, no. You have to have frontside entries, you need this much landscaping, you need parking on-site for each unit?
Yeah, so like you could say, I mean, it's the classic language that you see in zone coatings, notwithstanding everything that you just read in the R-one ordinance. If you split a lot based upon the provisions of state law, blah, blah, that the following requirements need to be adhered to.
Right, these are your development requirements.
Right.
And, do we, well, I guess this is why we're having the conversation, to give justifications of why we need these things in order to maintain the property rights and the property values of those who simply want to raise their families here and not be developers, right?
Well, I think you can't really say that, because that's been decided for you already.
No, it may have been.
Unfortunately.
But, but, as long as there's still a planning commission with people who live in this town, then the people who live in this town are going to say what they have to say.
Sure.
To help maintain the character and, and what this town is. And I think a lot of these kind of architectural elements speak to that to some extent, but it's also the undeniable consequences of forcing density in neighborhoods where it has no place. You know, you can't even put, if you drive on the west side of town, especially when you go further south and you have the townhomes there, and they may look architecturally like some of the surrounding areas, but there just simply isn't enough parking for all those people. There's not enough parking for the apartment buildings when you get down there. So, especially on the west side, there's not enough street parking. And once you say you can take an R-one and put in subdivided units, then we have to be very cognizant of how is that going to affect the neighborhood and how is that going to force more cars on the street? So is. So is is the maximum we could call for is one parking space per unit? So if they do a duplex, they have to have two on. And if they go four, it's only four.
Yeah, and and I think if we were to look at the diagrams again, it definitely presents a little bit of a challenge on the twenty-five foot lots. Because if you think that a standard garage has basically a sixteen-foot door and it's got basically a minimum of, for all intents and purposes, eighteen feet on the interior, and that assumes a moment frame in order to get it all to work, you're basic and you've got two three-foot, you know, side yards, well, we and you've got thicknesses of two walls, so you've just gone from eighteen, nineteen plus six is twenty-five feet right there. So where's the front door?
Right.
Um whether it's facing, you know, the street or the alley or whatever else, I mean, there's clearly a design challenge that is going to start creating something that's different in character than what exists as you try to accommodate four self-serve car spaces on a lot. Now, do you say that you allow tandem parking and that's good enough in those units? I don't think it would be possible to elect to force you force people to use stackers because that's making the construction more expensive.
How about subterranean? I mean, just because it makes parking more expensive or makes construction more expensive doesn't mean it's not required in order to maintain the character of the R one zone.
Yeah, I think that's where, though, we start getting into the hazy territory of if we start imposing design standards that make the achievement of the intensity more difficult, then the way SB nine is written, I mean SB three thirty is written, you're opening yourselves up to potential challenge. That every city that we've worked in, that has been sort of a finding that the city attorney has had to make, that when we approve new design standards, that they don't create some type of constraint on the intensity that is otherwise allowed. Up to this point, it's only been a conversation about ADUs.
Sure.
Now, all of a sudden, we've got this other thing, and it's like, well, how do we do that? And I I will admit, I'm just in the same position as you. I mean, I see this as a design challenge that has, you know, whether I like think this is a good idea or a bad idea, it's a design challenge because how do you basically design a twenty-five foot lot with four cars on it? Do you put and if you go back to the diagram, we showed two on one side, one in the unit in essence, and one on the front yard in a tandem, and that's what we did on the back because I hate the idea of not having a front door facing the street.
So then does the law say that we have to adjust our current standards in the twenty-five foot?
For the split.
To accommodate a lot split?
Yeah.
Well, let's be clear. We're talking about a potential challenge to something. I don't think we should hold back on anything we think is in the best interest of maintaining the character of R one zone based on some potential count challenge to some group out there. If that happens, so be it. I mean, we're no one's here to to break the law, but we are burdened with having to deal with what's the state mandates and at the same time trying to do what's best for the people who live in town.
Right.
So I I, you know, sure, there'll be potential challenges all day long.
Could you go back to the twenty-five foot one and I'll try to explain it a little bit better?
And and just, I'll go ahead.
So if you look at that, if you were, if you can see that we drew a on the front-facing lot, one car within the envelope and one car outside of the envelope, like that could be a carport. And it's the same conversation you have when you work with a multi-family housing project. There are a lot of multi-family housing projects that have tandem parking in them right now. There's a concern sometimes expressed by city officials, more often it's expressed in my experience up until very recently by developers that, well, that creates some type of inconvenience for the people who live in those units. But my attitude towards it is, is I'd rather see a single-car garage on a twenty-foot five-foot lot in terms of the expression with a front door facing the street with an element and say, well, if you build this, those people just have to cooperate with each other. Now, it may be that that, I mean, it is a duplex after all. They're not individually owned, right? It's a it's one ownership with two lots on it, so they have to cooperate. I mean, that's up to the people who live there. It's not necessarily up to the neighbors who would otherwise be burdened either with a inhospitable streetscape in the long run, or if you don't require the cars on the lot, curbside management that may or may not be possible.
The reality, I believe, in this town when it comes to tandem parking, especially in townhomes, and we've seen it on Smoky Hollow, probably not so much in Smoky Hollow, but that's just storage. You don't put two cars in a tandem spot. You put your Christmas tree, you put all the stuff you don't have room for in your house. And so tandem parking is basically one parking lot. It does not work, especially if you're talking about um, you know, a duplex or kind of multi-family. That's where your beach cruiser is gonna go or your golf cart. You're not gonna put your car in there.
Well, the other thing you could do, if if you were to say that's a condition, and this is after all a study session, you could adjust your property lines and require all four cars off the back and just say, you know, don't put them in a garage, or if you put them in a garage, you know, you have to somehow accommodate it this way. I mean, there there are some challenges to how that works because then how how is the land held and stuff like that or split? I mean, I'd have to think it through, but there there's a way of doing it. It's just it's a compromise. I fully admit it. I I don't have a magic bullet other than, you know, from a design standpoint, I don't have a magic bullet. From a legal standpoint, if somebody wants to sort of take on the state and everything, that's a somewhat different issue, but that's not exactly what I'm capable of doing.
So, John, in this situation, and you did say there are many lots in El Segundo that are twenty-five foot and they're alley loaded. That means there's no curb cut on the front. And so
Well, there is a curb cut on the front. We just
Well, there is in your drawing.
Yeah.
But I mean
The driveway is not in the front of those houses.
In real life.
Yeah, no, that's you're exactly right.
So how does that work? I mean, if if there is no front load and there's only alley load, can we just simply say, hey, if you if you gotta fit four cars on here, they all have to fit in the back or the plan does not get approved or 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 whatever the requirement is?
Right, why would why would we have to change the character and feel of the street by having trees ripped out so someone can put a driveway there for their duplex?
And Chair, if I may interject and John before you start, I because I I think this is the this is the exact type of feedback that that we want tonight, but um understand we we may not have all the exact answers to these questions because the idea is that we take this feedback and we use this feedback to inform to inform the recommendations that we're gonna bring back to this body. So this is the exact type of feedback that we'd like. Um I I just I I just want to forewarn the commission and hopefully you don't become frustrated with staff that we don't have answers to all of these.
There is another thing that's implicit in this drawing that we could play with, and I'm not saying you want to do this, but you'll notice under D, it says consider thirty-five foot height max in three stories. First of all, there's not, right now, you're at thirty-two feet, I think, max. So if you like, and the only reason I put that up there was because we were struggling with exactly the same thing that you're telling us about, which is like, how do you actually do this? And so one of the thoughts in my head was, well, can you stack things instead of um instead of spreading them out, like can by giving someone the option to build a third story, can you somehow mitigate some other aspect? I don't know that you can, but that's why we drew that that way.
The problem with that is that it says in here you can build off a pre-existing building and not worry about your setback. So a lot of these little things, there's like a garage in the back
Yeah.
and that garage is right up against the property line.
Yep.
So if you go three stories from that, you're gonna have a huge detrimental effect on the value and privacy of all the neighbors around them, even if there's an alley there, because now you've got single-story, maybe a two-story, single-story, and then a tower sitting up in your in your R one. So I I would not be in favor of any loosening or broadening any construction standards to try to fit square pegs into the round holes that is our R one zone. I'm more concerned with what can we do with the limited capacity we have to try to protect the feel and the safety of the R one, which means, you know, we gotta get these cars off the street. We we gotta figure out and and, you know, maybe we don't figure it out in this room, but um
Well, the other thing you could do, okay, the other thing that I I'd point out in in that scenario that I just described to you. I I mean, again, you know, you have to have sort of like mid-century modern type of um zeitgeist in your brain for this one. It it may just be that the ground floor has to be devoted to parking.
Sure.
And that the upper levels end up becoming the upper levels. That may put pressure on you in some ways to try to figure out how to allow the eight hundred square feet per unit. Because that was the other reason, like, we didn't really get too much into trying to diagram these things out, but we were struggling to figure out how to get a total of um thirty-two hundred square feet of development on these. But I think that if you accepted that the ground plane was in essence an automobile plane with some type of, you know, entrance taking you up, that there might be a way of doing that, but we'd have to test that a little bit more. I mean, right now, we haven't gotten there and I'm, you know, we wanted to get the sense from you as to, you know, how to think about this challenge more.
It it would be difficult to have um basically a parking lot in the middle of a residential neighborhood, which is what it would look like. Even if you have landscaping, you're gonna be looking at a carport basically with a little house stuck on top of it.
Potentially, but I I mean, I've been in cities where that's been accomplished and they're quite beautiful. And and I think from a, you know, pure architecture standpoint, I think you could do it. I think the question is, is would people really want to build that because you but I, look, I I all I can say is that if you tell us that you want us to figure out how to park a minimum of four cars on these lots.
Absolutely.
We are absolutely happy to take that on as a challenge, but, you know, on the small lots in particular, it's gonna be, we have to figure out what to come back with you and say, well, this is really what happens when you do that, and here's sort of how we get thirty-two hundred square feet on it. And, you know, without within A, limited resources and B, to try to make it generic enough that we're not designing for every single circumstance. So I accept that as a challenge.
Imagine that every lot is gonna be available to be redeveloped this way just because we got some weird flag lots and things going on. So we can't, we can't be so concerned about how do we make these developers happy and their dreams come true of making money? Let's focus on what can we do
Sure.
to to maintain the character and feel of what we have before we lose it entirely.
Yeah, and the Turner Center says that only about five percent of all the lots in the state of California will be redeveloped over a period of ten years or something like that.
And I was told there weren't gonna be a bunch of ADUs in town one day, but look at us now, you know?
But that does, I don't know, that calls to me, kind of, we're doing this design exercise. Has there been a financial exercise? Because I read that, and I do agree with that. I mean, I think you just said, would anybody want to build that? So is there a value play here? I mean, I know we're very concerned about this, rightfully so. But I do get the sense that we're kind of overplaying what the reality is. I mean, who
Well, I
What's the value proposition in subdividing your lot and building four eight hundred square feet?
It's a very smart question. We can't answer it in the context of this exercise unless we're allowed to expand the exercise and bring somebody on board who has the expertise to evaluate the cost of land and the cost of construction and the return. We've done that type of exercise. We've done it as recently as about um, actually, we're meeting with the planning commission tomorrow in Santa Barbara for exactly this type of question, but in the context of um kind of multi-family housing. In terms of single-family housing, we looked at it in Santa Monica about a year ago with HRNA advisors and basically came to the conclusion that there was virtually no incentive for people who are living north of Montana in that case to subdivide their parcels because they couldn't get enough return on investment from it. But El Segundo is different, and I don't know that those types of conditions apply here. This is a completely different housing market, obviously.
Does SB nine allow people to sell off half of their lot? Or is it simply just subdividing? So so it gets a whole new address, it gets a whole new whole new ownership, everything. That's
But an owner or the developer has to live on one of the units, correct, for a period of time?
No.
These are flippers. You can come in, buy it, tear it down.
Part of the rule is that one of the four units has to be owner occupied, for sure, for a period of time. But I don't think it's in the question is enforceability.
I I don't even think it exists. All it says is that if you develop one, you can't develop the adjacent property or go into business with someone or have a relationship with someone that develops the adjacent property. There's no requirement for um owner occupancy as far as I know, but we'll go back and we'll
Mr. Chair, may I may I interject?
Oh, there we go. That's Joaquin, our city attorney.
Oh.
It's a good opportunity for
Hello, Joaquin.
Voice from the sky.
Voice of reason or something.
Can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can, yes.
My headphones. Okay, so I just from from a higher level, I wanted to emphasize the distinction between the duplex requirement and the lot split requirement. And you may have SB nine duplexes created without a lot split. And you may get some lot splits that don't end up with duplexes created on those. So there are distinctions between the two components of SB nine. And the owner occupancy requirement is a good way to look at the distinction in that. Um as was mentioned during the presentation, there's a very loose owner occupancy requirement, if you want to call it that, baked into the lot split uh component that basically requires the property owner to sign an affidavit that says that they intend to occupy the um the unit on the newly created lot for a period of three years, three years from, I think, the issuance of the C O O. And as to that lot split component of SB nine, it prohibits a local jurisdiction from imposing additional owner occupancy requirements on the lot splits. However, there is no accompanying restriction on local agencies to impose owner occupancy requirements as to the creation of the duplexes. So that is one area where as to the duplexes created under SB nine, um if there's no lot split, a city could impose an owner occupancy requirement if there's an SB nine duplex created on a lot without um an accompanying lot split. Similarly, um and I think this will these types of features will come out more as I work with staff and the consultant, but another another thing that some cities are looking at are with with RENA in mind, um imposing an affordability requirement for the newly created units. Some jurisdictions are requiring that if you do a lot split, that the resulting parcel, there needs to be a recorded covenant limiting the affordability um of the occupancy to lower or moderate uh income households. So these are just some examples of of areas where the city can inject some some measure of control where there aren't prohibitions on on these types of of requirements. And I think like the consultant mentioned, there are areas that, for example, the eight hundred um square foot um requirement that we can lock that in as a cap. So there are features that are, we can elect to to implement, and then there are some more creative ones like the owner occupancy requirement for duplexes and consideration of an affordability requirement. Um creative examples of of additional features that we can implement.
I'm really glad you said that because I'm familiar with the city of Los Angeles, and I know that the city of Los Angeles Housing Department does basically consider any single-family property that has two units on it to be subject to their rent stabilization ordinance. And 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 I've just gone through this, but I I didn't want to really bring it up because I don't consider myself to be that fully understanding of the ins and outs, but even within historic neighborhoods, if you have a historic house that has had a, say, carriage house on it or something like that, it's considered to be subjected to the affordability requirements of the housing department based upon the way the rent stabilization ordinance works. And that's just two units. So I I think I've had some experience with that and 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 it is a real issue, and it is even potentially an opportunity if you put it in the RENA context.
So is what I'm hearing that we could have a requirement if you do subdivide or not even subdivide, if you take an R one and put up a duplex on an R one, one of those has to be an affordable housing unit.
I think that's what the implication is, but that is in essence the person who walks in and says I think that's what the implication is, but that is in essence, the person who walks in and says they're going to build a duplex and not. Split the property, if I understood what you said correctly.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that distinction. So so it's, this is allowed owner occupancy, I'm sorry. Affordability I've seen applied. To SB nine regulations. Some in the context where a city has an existing rent stabilization ordinance. And existing inclusionary housing ordinance. And I think some that have neither. Separately, as far as owner occupancy, there is. Room for a city to impose a potential owner occupancy requirement. For an SB nine duplex that's does not, that is not accompanied by an SB nine lot split.
Okay, but how would the affordability work? I mean, you you've got to have affordability for like twenty years for it to make any sense. Would would we get a deed restriction then upon someone who's applying for a duplex under SB nine? Where they would give us an affidavit saying this is gonna be built and it's gonna be rented to low income or extremely low income? How, again, how would the enforceability work?
Covenant.
I'm sorry?
You would require an affordability covenant to be recorded against the um, against the parcel.
Okay.
So I think it's something to to explore. I think it's one of the creative approaches cities are are looking into, so as. As I began conversations with the consultant staff, I think that's something we can look at as as a potential angle.
Well, thank you for that. And and John, do you want us to go through all these architectural elements and tell you which ones we agree with you are? Are fundamental to the characteristics of the R one zone? Because I've got a whole laundry list here, but.
Well, I'm I'm unfortunately capable of staying here all night long if you ask me to, but. Yeah, sure. I mean, anything that, any direction you want to give us, it's only going to help us. Come back eventually with hopefully something that's more responsive as opposed to less responsive.
So so if I, if I may, it's kind of. Making a little list of what I think are kind of the key elements that we should be focusing on in terms of. Uh, these design elements or design requirements. And my my top five, the list right now is is parking, so having adequate parking as as uh Chair Valino mentioned. And I think that vehicle access is really important and it should be a design consideration that that we uh. Leverage, if you go to slide, back to slide fifty. Um, where it has the twenty five foot wide lot and there's no. There's, we can do something like there must be access to the front or we can prohibit new. Driveways on twenty five foot lots on, I don't know, streets that don't have them yet, some, something to that extent where. It would almost force them to have their own lane cutting through the first, the property in the front, if that makes sense. Because if you look at the next slide of the fifty foot, there there's, or see, there's a driveway that goes all the way to the back, right, or?
No, it's the next one where we had.
Yeah.
That one does that because we were struggling with what happens when you don't, when you don't have an alley.
Okay.
That 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 sort of forced. The driveway condition to be maintained.
And that's a very typical El Segundo back house situation. Yeah, like that, yeah.
The challenge on that one. Because it's funny, we redrew this one because originally it was drawn. Where we, where. The cars only went up the driveway and they somehow magically turned to the left. But on a fifty foot lot with all the diff- different units on it, that. Became difficult. To sustain unless you started getting rid of the twenty two foot front yard. Because if you think about it, you're taking, again, a minimum of, say, eighteen feet plus eighteen feet, thirty six feet. And you have only fifty feet to work with in terms of depth, so the car comes up one side, it goes up. And then it backs out and comes back down, but you've just basically. Created a kind of like void in the middle that you could build over a little bit, but it's, it's. I mean, we could draw that one up, but it's a little bit. We thought it was gonna start putting pressure on your front yards, which we were afraid to do.
But I think I think vehicle access is something that that we can tinker with to.
Yeah.
To develop some.
Okay.
Then the the next thing is is setbacks for existing versus new construction. That they should have different requirements and, you know, obviously for for new construction, there should be more rigorous. Re- requirements there. And i- if you go back to slide fifty, I'm I'm shocked that you can have just eight feet between these two buildings, this.
Well, it's, it's a percentage of opening for your.
Right.
Fire. So the the dilemma is, and and we drew it like this on purpose because. What, the way they've written SB nine, it basically says that you can't require more than a four foot setback.
Cannot require more than, okay.
Between the two duplexes. They can be four feet.
Well, I think there's a little bit of play with that, but they're basically saying that you have property lines. And that you can require a setback from a property line of four feet, so. You're in essence dividing the property, it has a new property line, and so we interpreted that in the most conservative way. To say, how do we draw the zoning envelope? Like that. Now, you will notice that the purple area. Is more than four feet off of there and that was the implication that you could still. Potentially require a lot coverage requirement. Which would still allow for eight hun- two eight hundred square foot units. And and someone would have a little bit of freedom as to where the massing ended up there. Because you don't necessarily need the entire area that's left over for um. To cover a hundred percent of whatever you're allowed to cover, so that's why you can see that that purple area is larger than just. The eight feet on on that drawing. Because we were kind of thinking along those lines, but we, you know, haven't gotten there yet.
And I I do think, and my next one is lot coverage. I think that's something that we should seriously consider as well. Um, and then the 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 last one, I think that the entryway is an important piece. I think that was. I didn't really realize until it was kind of highlighted in your presentation that entryways are very important and I think that's a way, because. And and looking at this, this diagrams just make me crazy looking at it, that there's no entryway to the, to the front, the, you know, the alley access.
That's the zoning envelope, it's not the building.
Yeah, it's driving me crazy looking at it, but if there could be a way to to ensure that. Like the back house has a um, inaccessible or visible entryway, like. So the Amazon delivery person or the. Mail person would have to walk all the way to the back. I think that entryways are very important and highlighted in your presentation. Um. Just because how do you get to the back there? I mean, it's a design element that that I think. We we should consider, so. So that's my top five of things I think that we should leverage moving forward. I think we can tinker around with those things.
You know, John, you've probably seen around the country where uh new development on small lots. Uh, when it's front loaded, it just becomes a streetscape of garages. And if you don't see the, and and oftentimes the entryways are pushed back and it's just garage, 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 and it's just a terrible streetscape. And so I appreciate you trying to um create some standards that flip that on its head. But um, you know, parking, parking is a big thing, but I think if we ended up with. Front entries that were nothing but garages, we'd all really be disappointed. It would just completely change the character.
No, I agree with Kevin. I think it's what we require. You've got to have a front facing. You've got to have some type of porch. Um, either recessed or something that it, I I don't want to see boxes.
Right.
Right? I don't want to uh. So that brings us to another point is the um. Making sure the second story is set back and smaller. So that we're not creating alleyways down our streets where everything's pushed up to the maximum setback and then goes straight up in the air. Um, just to try to maximize their interior space, so. We are gonna need to see that, uh, the the second story being set back and smaller and and. Also, the front and side yards. We we have to protect those people who live around these houses from their privacy and maybe we need to beef up the landscape buffers. We have, if we don't have requirements for the rear yards and the side yards. I think we've got a. Probably three foot hedge requirement in the front, six foot maximum fence in all our backyards. We might have to think about that in, in a world where people can build on a preexisting nineteen forty garage right on your property line and go up three stories. Why are we prohibiting someone from having um, you know, shrubbery or landscaping to try to. Maintain some sense of privacy in your R one zone? Um. Yeah, you know, the idea of adding. A full growth tree in the front yard is not a bad idea because that'll stop people from parking on their lawns, right? I mean, you could, you could put artificial grass down there by code and then just start parking on it. And that's not gonna accomplish any of the goals that we're trying to maintain here.
So if the goal is to come up with uh a condition where someone can build a eight hundred square foot dwelling. And these conditions that we're putting on don't allow them to do that, what what happens? We say, sorry, it's, you know, you just. You didn't meet all these criteria, so you can't do it. Is that?
Well, I think if it happens one time. Staff will be in the position of working hard to work it out. I think if it happens two time, they'll work harder. The third time, you're, I think, starting to. Put staff in a position where. Someone's eventually going to. Challenge it, which may be what you want to do. I'm not saying that's right, but.
Yeah, I I think I, in most cases, and I I haven't been here all that long to to see it yet with the ADUs, but we've also sort of sorted out all the kinks with the ADUs at least at this point, but. Um, in in most cases, in my last experience. Uh, they're tied to architects who know that all they have to do is make a phone call to the state agency. Who just in the last six months has hired. Uh, a a staffing increase of of tenfold for their actual enforcement component of their division of HCD, which is the Housing Community Development. And so I, most architects that nowadays are very familiar with. That one phone number that they can call to to actually have HCD come and enforce upon a municipality, so. I think that, uh, as John explains, the first occasion, we might be hard pressed and and find some way to make it work or. I I I would imagine in that first scenario or even the second, we'd start getting phone calls from HCD. That would, wouldn't be out of the ordinary at this point. I'd rather have that happen than us be so concerned about potential enforcement that we go the opposite direction and basically. Give a blank checkbook to any developer who wants to build a cardboard box to what used to be a small craftsman in someone's neighborhood.
I'll only caveat that with, it's it's possible that if if it's determined at a state level that we are in violation of the state code. They will render our entire code as it relates to these provisions. Um. Un- unapplicable, you know, we would have to adhere to state standards and so we'd forego being able to. Uh, implement the rest of our standards that we we had developed and so. It it is a fine line. I think we understand the intent of of, you know, what you're expressing, Chair, and. I think that's what we have to go back to the drawing tables and figure out how do we walk that line.
No, I agree. There's, I mean, there's got to be a way to where you could potentially build a duplex in a neighborhood and not completely disrupt that neighborhood. Uh, give it the same character, look and feel. Um, but that's, that's gonna be on you, good folks, to try to figure that one out, it looks like.
Going back to the owner occupied kind of set requirement, is that something that we would have to add into our code for duplexes or that already exists? In how SB nine's written?
The S SB nine actually says that we shall require an applicant for an urban lot split to sign an affidavit stating. They intend to occupy one of the housing units for the principal residence for a minimum of three years, so. We shall do it. Uh, it's part of state law. Um, the enforcement component is is the difficulty in that scenario.
And similarly with the affordability, does that put additional burden on the city to monitor and manage that?
It does require monitoring and management, um, but as as the commission knows, we brought on the the nonprofit Many Mansions and um. I have no problem uh subbing that out, that enforcement. We would build that mechanism into the covenants where. Uh, Many Mansions could probably provide the assistance in regulating these uh with and for us. But that would be a challenge.
Is there any requirement in SB nine that these duplexes be for long term housing, meaning? More than thirty days? Because I know that's what they said with the ADUs was, this is not your Airbnb. This is for a family to live in town. Do we have the same? Rights and protections with the duplexes or is that something we need to add in, basically saying? If you are taking an R one and putting two units, those are family units. Cannot be rented for less than thirty days. It cannot be rented out as a vacation home.
Yeah, I I do see for the urban lot split, it does require. That they are uh used for terms longer than thirty days. I'll have to scroll through this and look at the, if you're just developing a duplex by itself, um. But I.
Michael, it does apply to the duplexes.
Okay, so our city attorney is clarifying that it does apply to both. Thank you, Joaquin.
All right, any other development standards or issues that we want to discuss or give guidance to? As we sit in awe silence of the task before us.
Well, it's John's tricky task right now.
Yeah, not one that. I I actually think it's a wonderful challenge. I I. Want to think that you could make um. Some type of delicious soup out of stones. But I recognize that it's not a uh. I mean, I I've been fascinated watching the stuff at the state over the last five years. It does seem a lot of it's driven. By. Certain types of. Northern California issues which. They've managed to drop a ten thousand pound weight on a part of the state that developed in a somewhat different way and. It seems a little unfortunate, even though I think some of their. Goals are aspirational in a good sense. They've done it in a way that kind of. I don't know, there might have been other ways to accomplish the same thing.
I don't disagree with you, John.
Are there other municipalities? I, we, we, I'm sure we're not the only ones dealing with this right now. Um, are there other, i- is everyone racing towards the same deadline? Or are there other um, other communities that have already navigated this? With some solutions that might be helpful for us here?
Well, we're trying to gather them. Obviously, this is the first time we've worked on this exercise and we've been made aware of. Other cities. We know that Pasadena's doing stuff with landscape. We know that there are some cities which are. Organizing themselves to challenge the law. But we haven't tried to. We, it's all hearsay for us at this point because it's all so new.
And we're, we're keeping tabs on it, uh, both ourselves and and John and his team, our city attorney's office has relationships with other jurisdictions and. Uh, we're all sort of keeping tabs on what the other jurisdictions are doing to to, you know, as as the city attorney mentioned earlier. Uh, he learned very recently of the affordable housing provision, so we're, we're trying to capture as much of that as possible. Uh, both, you know, grab the the great ideas, but also, you know, weigh the validity and legality of of some of these that that we can bring back before the the commission and and council at a later date and so we're. We're, we're daily, you know, checking and monitoring those things. And and LA Times is helping us with that because there, uh, there's a lot of attention uh right now in in the.
Yeah, I mean, this really makes the ADU stuff look simple in comparison.
Actually, on the ADU issue, I mean, I know you said it at the very beginning, right? It's not four units plus four, but. Once that lot is split and there. Then what happens can, new ownership cannot come in. And say, I'm gonna build an ADU in my garage and how do we? How do we reconcile that with what we already have on the books in regards to ADUs?
And and the question also, can they subdivide that duplex into two?
No. Because the way the law is written, it, you can only subdivide it once. At least that's the way I understand it.
Yeah, they can only do one.
That's correct, yeah. The lot can't be created, um. You can't subdivide a lot during a, an urban lot split that was previously subdivided pursuant to SB nine, but I just wanted to add. Um. Some detail to the ADU and JADU interplay and there is a clear prohibition on. Um, th- there's an allowance for cities to deny. ADUs or JADUs where um a lot split under SB nine is effectuated. However, there is not an accompanying allowance for cities if there is only an SB nine duplex created.
Right, because you could build up.
That's something we're looking at.
So, Joaquin, can you clarify that? So I just, if you're not going to exercise the urban lot split. And you're only going to build a duplex, the way that the law is currently written, you can have the duplex and then you can still have. How many ADUs?
Under the ADU law, uh. Objective, you know, minimums. Applying, you can potentially have. have, uh, two more ADUs, one, one ADU and one JADU.
Yeah, that's correct. But the question in my mind would be that, given that, yes, because you're not splitting the lot in that case...
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, John, in your recommendations, or you described a FAR allowance, describe how that might work.
Well, I haven't really done the math yet, but if you were to introduce an FAR allowance on the, um, twenty-five-foot lots, that would basically, you could sort of try to peg that to the thirty-two hundred square feet. Or, and I think that that would be one way, or you could theoretically say that in the case of a lot split, and this is where we'd have to really work with the city attorney, on a fifty-foot lot, you could still basically say that the FAR on each of the resulting lots was limited to what would end up adding up to thirty-two hundred, which would basically be more than point six. But, like, normally what people do when they, you know, I think what the, the nightmare scenario that you're imagining is someone looks at this purely as a developer, not as creating affordable housing or anything else, and they say, what's the largest thing I can possibly build on this thing, right? And, you know, you, you try to build to the market, and the market tells you that if you're building attached housing or of some sort, that you want to build somewhere between twelve hundred and seventeen hundred and fifty square feet per, per unit. And so, you know, there are ways that that could be controlled if you wanted to, and I think, given what you're telling me tonight, it sounds like you clearly want to. And that's okay, from my perspective, I mean. So, we just have to decide, I think, somebody, Commissioner McGay, McGai? McGai gave us five things. I think Chair Baldino, at least in his expression to Michael Allen, said that you're looking for an approach that, in essence, is an approach that acknowledges how this is done, but also basically does it in a way that minimizes impact to the existing environment. Meaning that it's not about trying to figure out how to relax all the rules to accommodate it. I mean, recognize that, like, we work in, we're doing a big project right now in the East San Gabriel Valley, and we're looking at the entire East San Gabriel Valley in the context of some of these things. There are lots in the East San Gabriel Valley and equestrian districts that are ten thousand and twenty thousand foot, single-family residential lots. And we got asked the exact same question by the County of Los Angeles, like, how do we think about it? And we just looked at them and said, well, you have to recognize that when you're working with twenty or thirty thousand square foot lots, the ability to accommodate cars and four units on it is completely different than if you're looking at, you know, traditional tract developments. And so, it's case by case and community by community. You're not going to do it the same way there that you would want to do it here. And that's, I think that's right. So, I don't know. There are no easy answers here, and obviously, there's some more research that has to be done to get where we want to go.
One more clarifying question, now that I'm, we're thinking about this duplex versus lot split. So, would that eight hundred square foot maximum apply to both? So, if I just say I'm going to build a duplex, now am I limited to two eight hundred square foot units versus if I do a lot split, then I'm limited to four eight hundred square foot units?
Well, in all truth, we didn't really consider too much in the work that we did up to this point, the implications of doing a duplex on a non-split lot. And that, again, starts to speak to the reason that you might want to go back and take a look at your lot coverages and your FAR, so that, in essence, you acknowledge it if somebody wants to do it, but at the same time, you don't inadvertently, you know, create two mega mansions or something like that, which is, which is, in essence, what people are worried about, because that, and then bringing all the cars in and, you know, all that other stuff, which is harder, but is a consequence of that.
I mean, when I think how this plays out, and only time will tell, and El Segundo, for me, it's a similar conversation with the ADUs. In reality, I think people would take advantage of a duplex and give that long-term to generations that come ahead. You know, you're going to build two homes for your kids if you were fortunate enough to have one home here to begin with, similar to the ADU exercise, versus a developer coming in and really building four tiny units like that. So, if that, and I don't know, maybe that's a totally different conversation. Is that a benefit or, uh, or not? And if you're going to build a duplex, are you really just going to build two eight hundred square foot homes?
I, I think that on the, it becomes much more complicated when you look at it through that lens, because on the twenty-five-foot lots, if you put a point six FAR on it, it's thirty-four hundred times point six, right? What, does anyone know what that is? Can, what that calculus is? Because it's calculus in my head. Eduardo? Two thousand and forty. And that becomes a really interesting proposition, which is that just taking the existing point six and putting on there, you'll end up with something bigger than two eight hundred square foot units. Is that a desirable thing? Or is that something that is, you know, you don't want to allow for because you're trying to, you know, as hard as you can maintain the, um, pattern that exists there right now? And we kept thinking, when we were doing this in all the rush, we kept thinking, divide the land, divide the land, divide the land. But you're right, if you don't divide the land, I, I'd have to think about it some more, and I'd want to talk again to the sort of legal experts about whether that constitutes, you know, if all you have is a single lot and they are allowed to build a duplex, but you require it to only be eight hundred square feet, is that somehow considered lessening the intensity or not?
Yeah, I, I think that's when, and that's why we tasked on to look at SB three thirty, which is the no net loss essentially of square footage or intensity of, uh, density. And so, I, I think we have to look at how that interplays or how it overlaps, because at the, at the end of the day, you can't accomplish the point six oh FAR, then, uh, that's, that's something that the state would probably reject, uh, because you're, you're no longer...
You're reducing the amount of livable space. On the other hand, there is no FAR requirement on the point, on the twenty-five-foot lots. There's only a lot coverage requirement. So, can you realize two eight hundred square foot houses on a forty percent lot coverage? I guess you can. I, I mean, I'm sure you can, but...
Well, keep in mind, lot coverage is also within the intensity definition of SB three thirty, so you're still in the same boat, it's just crafted a little bit differently.
I mean, I'm a little bit of the opinion that, um, of all the things you've raised tonight, the one that I find the biggest conundrum is the parking issue. I don't know how to do it well right now. Because I, I mean, if it was purely up to me and I, no one was constraining me, no one was talking to me, I'd say, okay, I just want to keep those streetscapes. I want it so that twenty years from now, someone can walk up and down those streets. I'm going to assume that there'll be more bicycles. I'm going to assume that people are more used to getting around with alternative means of transit. I'm going to assume that people are going to naturally locate closer to jobs. You're building a lot of jobs in El Segundo, because you have a great economic development thing going on to the east of here. So, maybe it will all be fantastic, and, but I don't want to walk down that street and see, I don't want to lose the front yards. I don't want to lose the orientation to the front yards. And that's why, you know, there was a sort of subtle hint in this, which is, okay, it is what it is, let people build in their backyards and, and don't worry about it. But the others, because you won't build more height, and you won't see it from the street, or you mostly won't see it from the street. But the problem that I have with that is I fully recognize, I, I can't figure out the cars in a, in a rational way without doing something like you suggested, Chair, which is force them underground. But you know what? Forcing cars underground in a relatively flat city is a completely disruptive, um, potentially way of doing it, because A, it costs more money to go underground, B, you sort of get into car lifts, because you can't possibly ramp down without turning your front yards or your rear yards into, you know, trenches. And, and in cities where you see that a lot, they've, they've consistently come back and tried to get rid of it, because it just destroys the streetscape. And, and so, I, I don't have a good answer. I'll try.
That's all we can ask, I suppose.
Yep.
Any, any final thoughts or comments? Well, thank you for all the work you've done so far.
Thank you.
You've got, uh, your work cut out for you still. Thank you, staff, for putting this together for us. Very, very educational and informative. I appreciate it. Um, and then timeline-wise, what are the next steps? What are we going to see again?
Uh, we're hoping to come back to the commission, I, I think it's a month from today, actually, the January thirteenth.
It's our next meeting?
Yeah, the January thirteenth Planning Commission meeting. Uh, that's, that's the tentative schedule, barring any, you know, inability to, to craft Zone Tech amendments, uh, within the next three weeks or four weeks. You know, obviously, the holidays interplay with that. But, uh, we're also, and just for context, you know, the city attorney's office is also looking at, uh, the different mechanisms we may use, um, to postpone the implementation of SB nine or adopt some interim, uh, process that, that allows, that buys us more time to develop these, these standards in, in a more thoughtful way, um, or a continued thoughtful way, I should say. Uh, so, but, uh, right now, we're scheduled to come back on the thirteenth of next month.
All right. Looking forward to talking to you more then. Um, next on the agenda is a report from our Director of Development Services. Anything additional, Mr. Allen?
No, with that, I, we won't see you until after the New Year, so happy holidays and happy New Year, and then we're available. City Hall will be open, uh, with the exception of the Friday before Christmas and then the Friday before New Year's, I believe. And so, uh, other than that, we're at your disposal, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you. And a report from City Attorney's Office. Anything for us, Joaquin?
Happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. Uh, Planning Commissioner comments?
Actually, I have one more question about this topic, if that's, if I can do that. Is this about adding square footage, or is this about adding dwelling units? And, and how does the state, um, discern between those two things? Because, because they are different, really, when it, when you are talking about housing.
Yeah, that's an interesting question. I, I mean, on the surface, it's, it's about adding dwelling units. It's about adding housing and, uh, housing capacity. But on the flip side of that, there'll be several advocates that'll tell you that greater floor area and preservation of floor area also contributes to capacity in, in housing. And so, uh...
Reducing floor area.
Or reducing floor area.
If you're allowed to build thirty-two hundred square feet right now, if we come back and we say you're only really allowed to build twenty-four hundred square feet, somebody could reasonably argue that we're limiting the number of bedrooms.
Yeah. So, uh, on the surface, it's about adding housing, uh, but floor area is a very, very important factor of that, for that reason.
And obviously, if, if there's a multi-generational thing, where you've got, you're living with your parents or your in-laws or whatever, that's one thing, but if it's just a, you know, just an opportunity to, to have more wall-to-wall dwelling in our town, then that's a, that's a challenge. Thanks.
Um, I just wanted to report that, um, on November nineteenth, I met with Eric Kaplan and William Missori from Griffin Capital, and Andrew Kuo of Gray Star. Uh, I believe that they, uh, these are the project proponents for the Catalyst Project. They just wanted to give me a rundown of some of the changes, or, you know, some of the draft changes that they've made or, or making to the project. Just wanted to report out, do I need to report the details of what they...
No, typically, you'd make disclosures, projects specifically, when, when they come back.
Okay.
You can do them, I'm, I'm happy to hear about whoever you want to meet with, but a disclosure like this, it would be when that is on the agenda, then we would give disclosures of, just like you said, I met with so-and-so-and-so-and-so on this date. Yep. Any other comments?
Just wanted to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, uh, and Happy New Year, and shop local.
There you go. All right, happy holidays, everyone. We'll be back here in Chambers, uh, January thirteenth at five thirty. Thank you.